We're discussing here. And if, if that figure just holds up, you know, we don't know that it's bid anyway. Now, we've got the money to pay cash in debt service. Uh-uh. Why not?
Because your debt service is already allocated for payment of the nineteen ninety nine school.
But didn't it also, you know, the argument was made there too, couldn't it be, you know, there it was without?
Well, what we can't do is outbid more than what we've got money there. So if you've got right now, I think it was two point four million today, and we had four hundred thousand dollars that we owed back from the principal. So you technically got two point seven million there. The only portion that we can use out of that debt service, I mean, that education debt service program is the ten dollar portion because it's the only portion that is not associated with debt. The rest of it is associated with that nineteen ninety nine debt. If you incurred more debt on top of it, you will not be able to pay off the wheel tax as it's finished. I, I got a question for Ronnie. Did that guy actually walk the roofs inside?
Yes, yes, because he had the warranty on the high school and fixed it. Yeah, it was his material.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, that was what my active is referring to is Mr. Kurt Sauer.
Yes.
Mr. Sauer is, was the, is a, he's a bidder, but he's also the manufacturer representative of Tennessee. And he's, uh, he's been on that roof, uh, and inspected all three. Uh, is within on part of that inspection. Uh, we also have utilized Mr. Mike Ford, who is one of the top roof, the guys in the, in the state are recognized by these gentlemen too. That's who they've utilized as a roofing consultant. That's who Mr. Gregorstein has with the architect. And they have been on that roof as of just a couple of weeks ago. It was all around him, with tour the high school, on the high school roof. Uh, the first times I've been over on, on one of the parts of that roof. And, uh, they inspected that and did core drillings and that sort of thing that they do, core samplings of that. So, uh, the architect is a central part of this project and particularly the roof consultant to make sure that the contractors do what they're supposed to do. And, uh, we have to do that by, by law. We have to have that architect involved in that conversation. Uh, but again, uh, one of the things about the E E S I that was mentioned too, you have to understand that. The insulation part of this bid, of this process of what it would be around somewhere in the neighborhood of two million dollars, we think, we don't know until bids, like Mr. Bush said, until bids come in. Uh, but one of the things that we have discovered with part of the E E S I, we can count as part of this project insulation on roofs, which we've done some preliminary figuring on that. Again, and preliminary figures on that indicates about four hundred and something thousand dollar savings. Uh, that we can put in on the E E S I and do it like that instead of doing it on the other, uh, through the other way. What that says is that if this is done, allotted, allotted for roofs, this amounts allotted for roofs, and we can use that on additional roofs if we need to.
Well, you know, that's, that's my point, you know. I cannot sit here and say if it's going to cost, say, a million five, if I say it costs a million five, that's fine, I got a property. But when I'm sitting here voting on two point one seven, well, it's going to cost a million five, I don't want to borrow that extra money.
Yes, yeah. We have to borrow regardless because that debt has to be associated with a loan.
But that's what I'm saying.
I know, but what I'm saying is, is that all the money, we're, we're not increasing the taxpayers' amount to pay payback in any capacity because the money that's being used to pay it back is the ten dollar portion of the wheel tax. So no matter what we borrow, whether it's one point five or two point one seven, it's not increasing the taxpayers' amount in any capacity.
Well.
I just want to make that clear.
Well, with, with you saying that, even though you're saying that, if we borrow more than what is needed, then we're not doing the taxpayers right anyway, being stewards of the money. You see where I'm getting at?
I, I do it away, but I tried to take that ten dollars off and y'all thought we know, we didn't want that at all. So, I mean, I was trying to give it to you and, and it didn't pass. So if we're going to keep it on there, hopefully we're not allowed to.
Twelve, alright. What does it generate a year?
Well.
Ten dollars.
In the last year, uh, from July, in the last sixteen months, you're almost at two hundred thousand dollars in sixteen months.
Okay. Then you're, you're, you know, on a two point one million dollar note.
It, it will pay itself back to it here, just like this is.
Couple of taxes bring you that some of the time.
Uh, yes, roughly seven hundred thirty five, I think, if I remember correctly. Right now, we've got two million four hundred seventy two thousand nine hundred point one dollars ninety six cents. The county still owes the four hundred thousand dollars, trends up, they're probably paid back February. And we also owe it.
So you'll leave about two point seven is what would be in the education debt service.
Correct, two point seven two eight. Oh, we also owe it the amount of money that we.
Always paying May.
That we're paying back, and I can't remember how.
About seven hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred.
Depending on the variable rate and interest on that loan, I think it's five hundred and eighty something thousand dollars we pay on the principal to do the roughly, depends on the variable rate loan we pay at seven.
Yeah, the million dollars that, that, that we spend out.
Correct.
We have to pay back, so that's another seven hundred thousand.
That's in May, that we pay that in May.
Yeah, is it a hundred thousand a year or ten hundred thousand?
What, principal or?
No, how much we pay back, it's a hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, we already, now that's already been figured.
That's already figured, yeah.
Hundred thousand, hundred thousand, yes. That is in your, on your debt service, probably a hundred thousand is already accounted for.
But go back to what you're saying. I think, too, and I read in here somewhere that this is, that the money is taken out in three, three withdrawals. You have to take a third of the money every year, uh, at minimum. You can't take more, I'm assuming, but you, you, at minimum, you have to take a third of it every year, up to the three years. But if the bid comes back at one point five, it doesn't mean you have to spend the entire two point one seven more than.
Yeah, I think that's what Jim is saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Just because we prove if we say.
Put it up to that amount.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so. But at the other end of that spectrum is what, if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is if it's one point five and that leaves you one point two to play with, you're going to do some more work on some other schools that you're going to have to come back and ask them to move anyway.
Absolutely. And if we can save what we're thinking we're going to save with the E E S I, that's not going to be part of two point one, four hundred and a thousand dollars, we can put another roof on Westside. That's number four on the list. If that's the case, if not, then, you know, but, count the Board of Education, I'll, this will, 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 to Mr. Fan on that, that the board can decide to, whatever, if that's, with that money, with over, over funding, if there, if there's any due blood over from the two point one. We want the best bids and we're going to do what's free for the.
You want my opinion?
Mr. Fan, what's like, you know?
Do y'all want my opinion on that?
I had, we had Ronnie here first, I'm sorry, Jake.
Okay.
First, I acknowledge, Mr. Fan, I really appreciate you being here tonight, I really appreciate the, the conversations that I've had one on one with him. And, uh, and, and I have no horns in supporting the need of those two roofs that have been identified. The fact leaking is occurring is costing monies to the taxpayers. It's the risk to kids playing on the floors when water is putting down, etc. So I have no horns with that. Uh, I, I don't think, Freddie, I understand what you're saying from an insulation standpoint, and I apologize for that because I know you've said it twice, and maybe you worked that over me, but I stay, I just don't understand. Uh, but I do understand this. When I talk with Mr. Sauer, the eight dollar, uh, square foot that he was throwing around and quoted at that time included that fiber tile, which is the best roof, and five inches of insulation for eight dollars a square foot. And that was his figure, it included five inches of insulation.
And you do that, I hope he's one of the bidders.
Well, he said at that time, if you bid it absolutely, you're going to be one of the bidders, and I, unless he's changed his mind, I, I, I know he's putting it right in. In fact, I'm just going to read the statement because it was in, you know, shared with us. From him, but this is next to his last paragraph, it says, "In closing, my proposal to William Curtis is that if we can install fiber type on the remainder of the high school, we will tie it to the existing fiber type roof and extend its original warranty another five years until twenty thirty. This will save the tear off and or replacement of that fiber type section and allow you all to get a forty plus year fruit and roof system on the rest of the high school for an extremely economical price. And while we don't do any sort of pro- out rebate for unused warranty, this five year extension offer up to twenty thirty will be at no additional cost to the county. Fiber type is trusted in county schools, districts, parts of the U S C always protecting this school's security and security, decade. Fiber type's been operating in Tennessee for forty years and we're proud of the hometown pride, so forth." So.
Later until the city's fiber type is.
Yes, and so the, the point I would make on that, that he has identified, of course, and he did come in and fix that twelve thousand one hundred thirty eight dollars, I'm sorry, square feet. Uh, and that's what he's talking about, he's going to extend the warranty to twenty thirty and then, of course, replace the balance of that. But, but that alone, good folks, at eight dollars, you actually would be saving almost a hundred thousand, ninety seven thousand, one oh four of the two point one. If you came back at twelve dollars, you're actually a hundred forty five thousand, six hundred fifty six, that is not necessary other than the two point one. So either way you look, you've got a windfall of a hundred thousand, or almost a windfall of a hundred fifty of the two, two point one guaranteed right now.
It will come out of there.
Well, no, that's already been done. It's twelve thousand one hundred fifty. Twelve thousand is square feet, so that's off the table. We should be bidding that again. So that would, you should finish and be bid on the high school to a hundred thousand four seven one. So that's already off the table.
And I, to be, uh, very clear here, uh, Mr. Sauer's company was not, he just said this is what needs to be done, basically what he did. Uh, Harkin Roofing out of Cookeville was a recognized person, a recognized company, to come in and work on that roof and get it back and get it back under warranty purposes of the twelve thousand square foot. So, and right now, it is, uh, not leaking. They've been back a couple of times with things, and Harkin has been great about coming back because they're authorized, and I put that in quotes, unquote, authorized representative of fiber type, which originally installed the roof back in two thousand and five. So we're very fortunate that we have part of that roof, it's proven itself, uh, except there were some installation errors, and those installation errors had to be addressed, and they addressed them, we're good, we're good with that hundred, with that twelve thousand square feet.
Yes, I have concerns about the resolution, uh, second paragraph, uh, and it's the same in both resolutions for the fixed rate and variable, it's the second paragraph. And, um, it says, uh, midway through Title Nine, Chapter Twenty One, Tennessee Code Annotated, as from time to time amended and supplemented, consisting of the construction, renovation, and improvement of the county school systems facilities, including new roofs for several school buildings, the acquisition of all other property, real and personal. So my concern here is that I'd like it to be stating the name of the schools that are going to be addressed. Um, it says, "Consisting of construction, renovation, and improvement of the county school system facilities," I think you're giving a blank check here, uh, rather than being really specific in what we're giving this money for. Because, uh, so I'd like this resolution to be saying specifically those three schools in the exact, uh, because anything could be done here other than even the roofs. So I think we really need to specific to this resolution.
It's, I don't know exactly how bad Westside's building is, Karen, you might just leave on that a little bit, but it's, uh, my opinion, if there's not enough money to put a complete roof on that school, if it's necessary, then it should be immediately paid back. We did it, or to, how, how, how it's done, this is just something that we're bidding on, if it goes over, if it goes under, we can't even go forward with this till we have it. But I can't speak for the entire board, I don't know what they'll want to do, Randy knows that, but it's in my opinion that if it does go over, there's not enough money to fix it up. We're trying to fix three roofs if it did come in under budget.
I'm in agreement for the three roofs that we've agreed upon, but.
Correct, the Westside is the very next one on the list, and if this does come under budget like it should, and we can finish that for this very price, then I think we should. But if it doesn't, and there's not enough money in there, say there's five hundred thousand left, or I, I, you guys, we should put that right back on the note immediately. We are getting back to the county, every, every house got to work, that's, that's my opinion, now there's four more of us.
Well, the way I read this, it says not to exceed two million one hundred seventy one thousand dollars.
Correct.
So that doesn't mean that they can act, I mean, that's just the total amount that they can borrow. So, I mean, if, if what you're saying is right.
If it comes in under budget, like Mr. Mahatry is saying, which I, I hope it does.
But if it comes up to two million dollars and there's a hundred seventy one thousand dollars left, and you know you can't do Westside, your opinion is you should.
We, we, we give it back, that's my opinion.
You don't give it back to us, you give it back to the education debt service.
Correct.
It's all paid, paid.
Correct, that, that's my opinion on that.
But you're also saying if you have, it come under budget like Ronnie said, and there's six hundred thousand dollars left in there, your opinion is to go on and do the next step.
Well, if, if Westside is in that dire of a shape, we, we can get someone to come look at it, uh, I think we should probably go ahead and fix it while we've got the bids and stuff. But if it, if it doesn't, if there's not anywhere here enough money to cover that, then it should automatically go back.
One thing to, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, if it does, it'd have to be rebid anyway because you've not bid it on those three roofs in the first place.
So I, basically, all I'm asking you for is three schools, if it comes under that bid.
I, I think this is just a blank check here, I just think we need to have specifics right now as far as what the schools.
Well, that's actually defined with us, we can.
I actually.
I don't want to be having, say, build, we're buying property and other renovations and all that, what we're agreeing to are these things here, that's what the commission is approving and what we've been discussing.
I like what you're saying with the addition of what he just said.
Sure.
That's saying if it doesn't, I mean.
Oh, if it, we're going to spend this on the, on the roofs.
Roofs, period, there's no buying.
I don't have any plans, we, the board has not discussed anything except fixing the roof.
But to hurt her point, it'd be better if it was in writing.
I agree with that.
I want this aced out, renovations, improvement, and all those, just what we've agreed to here at this commission, what we've been discussing.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I also have been writing from the architects, and these three roofs are mentioned by, by the environs contract board agreed on, and this is of May twenty third, uh, which says, "Saint Gras's guests provide architectural services for your project, re-roofing Cankey High School, including the location of Williams School, Williams Elementary School, and Woodbury Grammar School." So what the board has already passed with the architect is already in writing that if it's drilling this issue, that I don't have an objection.
I understand, I understand that's what you're saying, Kirk, thank you, Jake. Uh, uh, it, it's a sound like, sound like what we got here, if, if we're going in writing, if I'm, if that's why you're writing, to the effect of what Jake is saying, and to, you know.
And if you looked at this, Grace?
No.
Uh, I, I.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Curtis, uh, the architect's charge is seven percent.
Uh, the standard architect fee, yes, sir.
Okay, so they're charging seven, seven percent. Okay, how are they charged at seven percent, yes?
Seven percent of the total of hundred seventy thousand four hundred fifteen dollars will be due when the bids are open, the final thirty percent will be due on the final completion of the roofing project.
Okay, so as of now, it's being calculated against the two point one, correct?
Yes, it is.
So it is costing us to have a.
And that's the, you know, the estimation that we would give way back then.
Uh, I, I understand, but, okay, I, I'm just going to say what's on my mind, and I've had the conversation with Mr. Fan very well. Things started from the standpoint of needing roofs on the schools. Recognizing the financial condition of this, this county, I don't think anybody thought that we had enough money, quote unquote, to do all the schools, even though there was a recommendation, I think, on all the schools. It was determined, okay, we'd go with three, that was prioritized by the architect, and those are the three that we've identified, talking about for the last, I don't know how long. That's where we started, that's what everything's been driven from, that's where the figures came from, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because three roofs, nothing more, nothing less. And the only time this evolved out was when we approved the two point one, which actually was for lesser, lesser roofs, cost of those roofs. I forget which one we identified that we actually got our figures off of, but I know it was not the most expensive one, it was a lesser quality. Yeah, mid-range roof that they put on the table, and that's how we came up with the two point one. And now from that point of, okay, it appears that maybe there's a good possibility, nothing's in writing, nobody knows to the bids goes, we all got our figures false and hoping to pray, that there's going to be a lesser dollar amount that might come into play. And yet, we're still obligating ourselves to two point one assistance to this county, and architect fees associated with it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I, I apologize, I don't, I don't do business that way.
But you're bringing the table, one of my decisions, so I'm going to call it that way.
Uh, so I support three roofs, guys, I support three roofs every which way possible.
Me too.
And, and, and I sign off on that because the need is there. To me, you eat an elephant a bite at a time, and to me, that's the first bite. And from there, and I know I'm now stepping off the deep edge, but folks, at some point, we've got to get serious and get commissioners and, and, and education board together and just start looking at long, short, medium, medium, long-term capital needs in a serious way.
That is a living thing.
And, and for us to just keep picking roofs and say, we'll do that, and we'll do that, and do that one, without having some framework for this puzzle to start looking forward, I, I don't know what we're really accomplishing, or if we know what we're accomplishing of the obligating money for the taxpayers to pay.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, now, you said it's time for the commissioners and the, the ed, and the education to get, get, we tried, you didn't show up.
And Greg, I will respond to that, my friend.
Who?
And, and, and I, I don't think he was saying that in a derogative way, or I'm not, I'm not going to take that in derogative way.
It's just a fact.
That should be driven by our school director, board of education chairman, and our county, and our county executive. And until those parties are on the table leading the charge, you're going to have trouble having a, a consensus of all members, regardless of commissioners or board of education members, to be part of any meaningful conversation.
I disagree with that, their responsibility, it's our responsibility, we were elected to help.
You've got to have leaders.
Agree.
To make things work.
And we didn't have any.
You can't have ten leaders running this table.
You, you're right there, but.
End of story.
You know what, I mean, that was set up last year, and it was a cooperation between the school board, I, I give y'all a, what, a month's notice? I mean, there, there was, you know, and actually, my conversation with Brent was, is he said, you go forward, then you do it. So I went forward and I did it.
And, 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 uh, let's get back to.
Yeah, let's, let's get back to, I'm, I'm.
Like what we're here for.
Let me, let me say.
And that is the roof, it's contract.
I, I understand what you're saying, I understand what Jim's saying, and, and I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, here's what I know to be fact. The ten dollar portion of that wheel tax is paid, this is not costing a single more penny to be paying the property taxes. So I'll look that on the record, so it's not like we're out here just spending money left and right, and this is going to cause a tax increase, because it's not. The tax is already there, I tried to take it off, y'all didn't want to take it off, so it's still on there, so why would we not let them use the money that we continuously save as your money? But yet, we want to control how they spend, which makes not a lot of sense to me, if, if you've got them sitting there saying, I've got multiple roofs that need fixing. Now, the two point one seven one is based on a twelve-year amortization, or however you say that word, if it's laid out, we know the money's there, pay it right now, they've got two hundred thousand dollars sitting in there. And by the time that the first bill comes through, you're going to probably have over three hundred thousand dollars in it. So if you had a car, and you needed an engine, and you went to the bank, borrowed money to get the engine, and your tires are bald, would you just borrow money to get your engine, or would you borrow, borrow the money to get your tires fixed?
Get the engine?
Yeah.
I want to spend the money that I got, can afford to spend.
You're going to the bank, borrow.
If that means running a bar, uh, bald tires, I run a bald tire.
Did you see the risk you take with doing that, though, Ronnie?
I do.
You take the risk of, of wrecking, causing somebody else to get hurt, and we take the risk of school children getting up in a roof that might hurt them. And I, I can see the logic in saying, well, we can't do this, and then they're going to come back in two years and ask for it again.
Corey, I hear exactly what you're saying. And I make no distinction between property tax and wheel tax, and sales tax, and beer tax, and tax, 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 because you know whose money it is?
It's all our money.
No, it's not our money.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm a fight back player.
It's, uh, it's all taxpayers' money.
Which is all.
So I don't, I don't categorize and say, you know, I'm not having the property tax increase that for, it's okay. No, it's tax money, they're paying, so we're taxing it. So recognizing we don't have sufficient monies to quote unquote do what the architect says needs to be done.
But you did, Ronnie.
No, you recommended for all schools.
No, that was Russell's proposal.
No, no, the architect recommended for all schools.
Okay, so we don't have the money to do all schools, and we got the money to do four schools, but you only want to do three.
So you only, just, you find your finances against the level of risk. Yes, there's always risk, always risk.
Well, then what's, what's your price on a child getting hurt?
Again, I can't answer that question because we don't have the money to cover it.
You do.
No, no.
You've got two point one seven million dollars over a twelve-year period, so multiple roofs on this county, so will.
Then, then Corey, then you need to take and run with Russell's proposal, come up with the money to quote, uh, for Russell County. Well, you got the money to do five, you got the money to do six, you got the money to do eight, if you want to generate revenue.
Can I, can I get a minute here and say if anybody else has, uh, any kind of advice you want to talk about there?
We've discussed this past year doing three, can we just focus on three right now?
I, I'm with.
I'm with, I'm with Corey on this because this, this money is coming in from county, people are buying these school tax stickers, that, that's a law, they have to buy them. The money's coming in, it's not an extra money that we're going to have to raise next year to pay it. I mean, I'm not saying it don't have to be paid, it does, but if we got the money to do four, I think we ought to do four. If we only got the money to do three, do three.
Pay it back to.
And pay it back. It, it really is the county, the school system's money when it comes down to it.
Well, that ten dollars can only be used for this purpose, you can't use it for nothing else.
Just beg, but.
Look, this is a draw loan, there ain't going to be no more money took out of it than what will be required of the new roof. If I'm being a man, I, that's all that'll be drawn out of it.
Correct.
That has to be written down.
Do you need this?
Next evening.
It's, it, it is in here, it says, uh.
Break it, that was your fix.
Says this rate, this is a fixed rate loan will be structured as a draw loan. The county can draw on the loan for a three-year period with a minimum of one-third of loan amount being drawn each year. And no fees or interest will be paid on anything except what is drawn out.
Correct.
They can draw up to three, draw up to four, draw up to five.
You're drawing up to two point one seven one.
You're drawing up to two point one million, and that's the limit, but if you get a bid that comes in to ride my happy numbers, that's all you take.
But Mr. Curtis is then going to rebid additional schools to do it, he's got money to do it.
Okay, well, we.
If it comes in cheaper enough where he can do one additional school, more power to him, he's spreading the dime thinner goodness.
That's what it should be doing.
What came to the table versus what you ended up with when you're talking about a horse and a cow.
Ma. That, that plan I put out was a BS plan to just see who would run it up the flagpole and salute.
And did you salute?
No, sir, but you had about three dead.
I was not one of them.
Uh, if, if we decide to do Westside at that point, they can't, we don't, we don't have a contract, number one, with the architect to do that. We've got an estimation from the roof that was done now nearly three years ago. However, I can speak to Chairman Fan, Chairman Fan and board would have to approve that, and then come before this body again because we have no funding, and say that we have this amount left over, and we appreciate what you have done before, and if we got to do it for the good citizens of the first district, we need to do it. And, uh, the school, the, the students at Westside. If not, then okay, that would be up to, I'll defer to the chairman on that part, that would be up to the chairman to bring that before the school board to allow that to be done with the architect and.
And with the language that is proposed, which I like. And with the language that is proposed, and which I like, and what Jayden is actually saying, it kinda solves the entire problem. Here's the three roofs we can do, but we can't do anymore if we don't have enough money. And if we don't have enough money to do them, we return it back.
We're not big people in this county, a year down the road, a year.